You ready?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to welcome you to the St. Louis County Planning Commission Virtual Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hillsinger, Chairman of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I would like to introduce Jacob Trimble, Acting Director of Planning and the planners assigned to tonight's petition. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petition at an executive meeting in July or early August. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within two weeks of this meeting will be distributed to the planning commissioners and their executive meeting agenda packet. In addition, if additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the County Council, who has the responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning Department staff will show photos of the petition site. Then the petitioner will present the request. They will be allotted 15 minutes. Then persons in favor, in opposition, or with concern will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Please note, you may only speak one time. To indicate you wish to speak, click the raise hand icon to the right of your name on the participant list. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding presentation. After all opposition speakers have spoken, only the petitioner will be allowed five minutes rebuttal to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After the meeting concludes, a poll will appear, allowing you to indicate whether you're in favor, in opposition, or with concern. This is not a vote, and it's not binding on the Commission or the County Council. The purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. And with that, tonight's first petition will be PC 12-21, Delinda Cooley. And as a brief note, anyone listening for PC 13-21, South County Dodge Chrysler Jeep Ram has been postponed. So we'll go ahead and start with 12-21.
Thank you. I'm bringing to you this evening PC 12-21, Delinda Cooley. It is a request to rezone from C2 and R2 to solely R2. It's a 2.12 acre tract located on the east side of Lima Ferry Road, approximately 330 feet north of Providence Point Drive. On the left here, you can see a county context map. It's located in South County, just to the east of I-55. And then on the right, you can see a more localized context. And if you look sort of to the north, there's a small commercial strip. The east is an undeveloped tract. The southern bound is a subdivision, single-family attached homes. And then the western bound is generally Lima Ferry. And just on the other side of Lima Ferry is a few undeveloped parcels. And then this is just the land use map, kind of showing that in more detail. Generally, it's a commercialized area to the north along Lima Ferry. And then to the south, the other, you know, the western side of I-55. And then further to the east of Granger Road is all single-family. And then this is a zoomed-in aerial of the site itself as it currently exists. There's that first structure you see, kind of towards the north. There is the existing single-family home. The structure along the eastern property line is a horse barn. And then there are two other outbuildings on the parcel and a little pasture there as well. And this view is if you were standing at the entrance to the site along Lima Ferry, looking east into the site, and you can see the public hearing notice sign. And then if you turn from the same spot and you're looking south along Lima Ferry from the subject site entrance, and that's along the western property line. And then looking north along Lima Ferry from the subject site entrance, again, along the western property line. And then if you kind of turn a little bit east, this is that small commercial strip directly to the north of the subject site, and that is off Lima Ferry. And then from that commercial strip's parking lot, you kind of turn on, you can look and see, you know, southwest towards Lima Ferry, you can see the entrance to the site where the gate is. And then this is looking into the subject site along the northern property line. And you can see the, I can go back real quick now. You can see the existing single-family structure sort of in the foreground. And then in the background, you might be able to see the horse barn. And then this is if you're looking south along the eastern property line. And the, just to the east, there is an undeveloped tract. And then this view is from that subdivision to the south of the subject site. You're looking at a retaining wall that is in the subdivision's common ground. I mean, then just beyond the tree line is the subject site itself. And then there's just this context of the type of homes, structures that are in that subdivision immediately to the south of the subject site. And next, the petitioner has a presentation.
Okay.
I'm going to make you the presenter now, Stacy, so you should be able to share your screen.
Okay, thank you for hearing me tonight. Can you guys, let me see if I can share this with you. Can you see that now?
No. So at the bottom of the WebEx meeting, there's, next to your mute button, there should be a button that says share. If you click that and then click your presentation, it should show up.
Okay, lost you. Here we are. Okay.
It's coming up now.
Okay, here we go. Sorry about that. Okay, so our proposition is to, what we're wanting to do with the property is build a modern day greenhouse there. It's currently consisted of dilapidated properties that are in dire need of repair than we thought when we purchased the property. But in order to proceed, we really require this property to be zoned completely R2 for the purposes of getting financing in place and really just to do anything. The partial zoning is actually affecting us to not be able to proceed any farther. Our rezoning request, we want to thank you for the time to hear our petition for rezoning the property. Sorry, there's a, someone right on my pane here. Hold on one second. Let me move my, there you go. Intention of building our dream home. During the process, we found out a small portion of the land was zone C2 and remainder of R2, which brings us why we're here today. We're requesting the entire parcel be zoned R2. Not able to secure financing with the property having multiple zonings. The property currently consists of one cabin, one 16-stall horse barn, and a loafer barn, as well as an old workshop. In our PowerPoint presentation, you'll see the current layout of the property as well as our vision for our dream. We provided the land description that was performed by the survey company, the THD Design Group. We have the current survey. I don't know if we can zoom in on that. I'm, you, we've provided this to everyone there at the council. So I think you should all have copies. If not, we can definitely get that out to you. This is an over aerial view, which you've seen already from the prior presentation. This kind of shows how. And this is our new proposition with the placement of the home. We still would need to get elevation staked and everything to decide exactly where it's going. But the home will be somewhere right in the, in between the old cabin and just to the, I guess that would be to the west of that 16-stall horse barn. There's an aerial view that would kind of show you as well of what our intentions are. We would like to turn the old cabin into a greenhouse. We would tear down most of the structures there. We're going to recondition and completely remodel the 16-stall barn. We're not intending to have livestock or anything like that. We just are going to be using it for our own storage and just, you know, have a workshop area. The new farmhouse is where the old loafer barn is, as well as the old shop that's sitting there. And then we plan to plant a living hedge along the border of the fence there, especially along the commercial property. It would be most likely some type of arbor by being approval, of course, with the building commission, what we can plant there. But that's, you know, provide privacy for the commercial property that's there as well as the undeveloped parcel behind us. Pretty much, other than that, there's really no sight of the property from Lima Ferry or from the southern property, the southern subdivision there, Providence Point. We've provided building plans of our intentions, what we plan to build there. As you can see here, it's not going to be a small home. We plan to make it a modest home and try to keep with the modern farm construction look. And this would be the upper level of the blueprints we have. View of the home. You have the side views of the home here. And then this would be the rear of the home. Obviously, placement and everything is going to depend on building plan approvals, as well as the elevations and everything. We'll have the THD group are ready to come out as soon as we proceed, once we get the final blueprint. We're still in preliminary phase because with the C2 zoning, we need the financing to really continue forward before we invest too much into the property. I'd be happy to answer any questions any of you guys may have regarding our project. And we really thank you for hearing our presentation.
Questions, anyone? What's the size of the house you're proposing?
We're looking at finished main level. Well, with the total finished space without the basement would be roughly 3,000 square feet.
Okay. And what's the use for the greenhouse?
Well, we planned on trying to grow maybe orchards along the driveway there. And that would just be for seating. We just really don't want to tear down a good structure that can maybe be repurposed. And it may be that that structure does need to come down. We haven't gotten to that point completely yet, but we're open to all ideas. As we get into the building phase, we'll, we'll see how that proceeds. It may just need to come down altogether. But right now, it's providing really good privacy for the new placement of the home until the living hedge could grow. It blocks out that commercial property, gives them privacy as well as us. And the idea is that we could utilize that to, you know, start the trees or our plants. We plan on having a lot of crops there. It's a lot of land that we want to use, so we want to take advantage of all that land.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other commissioners?
What kind of material are you going to use to do this? Is it mostly brick or?
The front will have a lot of Asia, but mostly, it's going to mostly be siding. It's siding. Cyrus, I don't know if our builder Cyrus with Home Source is on here as well. I don't know, he's having problems communicating. But we haven't finalized all the finishes, obviously, yet. We're still to that point, but it'll be, you know, high-end and definitely the front. It's the front. We'll let brick facade on the front there.
Okay. Anyone else have, have any questions? Okay, seeing none. Mel, you want to take over?
Sure, so if anyone has comments or questions about this petition we've just heard, you can click the raise hand button next to your name on the panelist or on your attendee list. Or it also will be in the bottom rightmost corner of your screen to raise your hand if you would like to make a comment. But at this time, I don't see anyone, Mr. Hillsinger.
Okay.
Here we do have one.
We do have one, okay.
First, we'll have Kenneth Circle. Kenneth, you are unmuted. Kenneth? You are unmuted, but I'm not sure we're hearing you. Okay, we will need to come back. Next, we have Diane Bickett. Diane, you are unmuted.
Hi, thank you. I live in the subdivision just to the south of this site. Obviously, we have that rock retaining wall right there. I'm concerned about blasting that might impact us in this development and the integrity of that wall. And I'm concerned about the change of any, let's say, water flow, any drainage off of that site after the construction. What can you tell me about any plans to avoid that?
Well, I think the home placement, you'll see, we're going to be pretty far from that wall. I know the wall you're speaking of, and the way the land is sloped, water would definitely run away from that area. And the home placement is going to be, I would say, a good 200, 200 to 300 feet from that cliff back there, that brick, that block wall that's there. I don't think it's going to disturb anyone. Obviously, again, we have to get the placement of the home exact. But compared to what's been there that's running down that wall now, it's already existing on that property. And it should be a big improvement because there's a loafer barn there that's currently almost falling down. And that water from that loafer barn is currently going down that wall that you speak of now. So I think it's actually going to be a huge improvement for you guys. If anything, I don't know how much runoff you guys see from the property currently, but it'll be.
Yeah, we get quite a bit.
Yeah, I would say the majority of that runoff is coming from that loafer barn because there is no guttering or drainage at all from there. So us, you know, the property hasn't been maintained. And to be honest, I'm sure anybody that's seen the property knows that it, until we purchased it, it hasn't, had it been touched. But yeah, our, our plans are to get rid of that loafer barn. And that's going to help that runoff dramatically, I believe. I think it'll improve more than harm from any type of runoff.
Well, what about any blasting that would have to take place?
We don't anticipate a lot of blasting. Obviously, we have to have soil tests done and all that. But any of that would be approved by the, the building. We don't anticipate any. Our builder was out at the site, and we don't, we don't think we're going to have to get into blasting. It's, it's actually really good soil there.
So. The county does have, the county does have procedures in place if blasting would be necessary. So it's not an open-handed item.
Not only procedures in place, but I would assume compensation if there were any damages incurred by any of the builders in this subdivision?
It's, and they do a survey of properties surrounding the location to verify any damages that exist prior and any damages that would exist afterwards. So yeah, there is procedures in place to take care of surrounding property.
Okay, well, I, from a resident perspective, those are my primary concerns. I do think that this new structure will certainly give improvement over what's there. But I'm just concerned about any impact, obviously, with runoff. And if you are going to be paying attention to the drainage and the grading in that area, specifically to make sure that it grades away from this wall.
Oh, yeah.
Because we do have a severe drop-off there.
Oh, yes.
We could, we could significantly impact that.
Yeah, and I think that you're going to see a vast improvement from what you're currently seeing with the new structure. Like I said, just walking around the property, I can see water just running off the structures that are currently there. The gutters that wire up are no longer hot or fog. And when we're done, the drainage will be more than sufficient. I've actually gone through this on another property I did in our previous home. And we had to redo all the drainage. So we want to get it right from the first time. You know, that, that cabin that's there, it's had a failed drainage system put in that. So we want to make sure that, you know, we, we have all the drainage necessary, not only for our home, but for the, the surrounding properties as well. With that cliff there, you could receive a lot of runoff. And we, we definitely understand that. And we want to try to prevent that and actually improve that for you all the best we possibly can. And our builders will be licensed, bonded, insured. So, you know, he's having problems speaking right now. So he was going to go over some of the technical questions that you all may have. But we can ensure you that it'll be, you know, high-quality property is our purpose and to really restore the property. Because I know it's been a eyesore there for a long time for a lot of people. And we really want to take the property and turn it back into a beautiful farm is what we want. Not a work, we're not, we're not planning to turn it into a business, which is why we, we need this C2 portion gone, so.
Is Cyrus Zenhari the architect?
Cyrus with Home Source is the builder. He's the customer builder. And I think the architect we're going to be using, he's there on the, the blueprints, the DL design. And then we'll be using the THD group for the surveying and property location, all that.
Cyrus is now unmuted. Cyrus, if you want to add anything.
Yeah, I do. Thank you very much. Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, wait. I wanted to address the last question. It's a very good question. It's very hard to visualize without being on the lot where the home is going to sit and what the, the natural core grade of the land is down for the residential area and the property. What I can see is where they, fairly high on the high side of the, fairly flat right there. But it does start downhill pretty quick, which is probably, I assume, why some water is retaining in this case. The home itself is designed to be a, and what that essentially means is, part one, you do anticipate less excavation because essentially half of the home is a walkout wall. We're going to hit rock during excavation, that's always a possibility. But if you hit rock, there would be some heavy equipment doing busting, but no blasting. The second piece of that is because it is the way it is, anticipating use of that material that we excavate to regrade your backyard area to level it out. And at that point in time, we have an opportunity to save the land to essentially have water directed in any direction we want. And my assumption is that we're going to redirect it almost more towards the Lima Ferry area and away from retaining wall.
Okay, Mel, is there anyone else?
I don't see anyone else.
Okay, commissioners, any questions? Seeing none, this will conclude this hearing. We appreciate everyone who spoke. And with that, we'll move on to PC 14-21, First T Range, Inc. Proposed use golf driving range with associated restaurants and retail sales.
Hey, as Wayne mentioned, it's PC 14-21, First T Range, Inc. Requesting a change in zoning from floodplain, non-urban and non-urban to CA and floodplain CA. It's a 12.8 acre tract located on the east side of Lima Ferry Road, approximately 1,100 feet south of Baumgartner Road. And again, you can see the, the county context. It's in far south county and to the east of Interstate 55. And then a more localized context, you can see generally along the southern boundary there. It's the Merrimack River. And then to the west is Lima Ferry Road and some vacant land and some commercial and industrial uses to the west, as well as to the north and to the east. And then the land use map here gives a little bit more detail. Again, you can see the Merrimack River along the south. And then if you go west along Lima Ferry Road, there's a VFW hall. Past that's the wastewater treatment facility, vacant agricultural land. Along to the north, there's a tree service office and warehouse and some other generalized commercial industrial construction offices, a U-Haul facility, MSD is a facility to the east as well. And then this aerial, I just wanted to highlight where you can see that where the floodplain is on this property. And it's mostly along the, the southern portion. And the area that's shaded blue is, is the floodway. And then the sort of the, the hash yellow demarcates the floodplain. So it's primarily to the, the south and kind of runs up along the eastern, western edge. And if you look towards the north, northern bound of the property, that's where the existing driving range T structure is. And this photo is, if you're looking east into the subject site, basically at the entrance and along the western property line, along Lima Ferry Road. And you can see the public hearing notice posted. And then if you turn right around, you're at the entrance and you look west across Lima Ferry from the subject site, that structure there opposite Lima Ferry is a hockey club facility. And then this view is looking south along Lima Ferry Road from the subject site entrance. And then looking north from the subject site entrance, a little bit into the site, kind of along the northern property line, that's the tree service company. And then if you go a little bit further east along the northern property line, and this view is looking kind of northeast out from the subject site, and you can see the, the storage of some, you know, in, in heavy equipment and, and materials. And this view is looking from the entrance to the subject site into the site from Lima Ferry, the, the western property line. And you can see the, and this, this view shows as well the existing driving range structure. And then this view is looking northeast out of the subject site. And it's mostly undeveloped land, but a little bit further in the background there is again, storage of, you know, commercial vehicles, heavy equipment. And then this view is, is a little bit further along the eastern property line. You're looking southeast. It slopes down a little bit. That area that you're looking at, that's generally what, where the floodplain is. And it's undeveloped land. And again, this is from the, the southern property line. You know, it's using that little dog leg there. And again, sort of looking down a little bit of a slope that, you know, floodplain and also still undeveloped land. From that, that same spot, you're looking back across the, the range area, back at the, the T structure along the northern property line there in the distance. And then the petitioner has a presentation as well.
I've given you the present, the presenter role.
Yeah, by, can you see our presentation on the screen now?
Well, you need to go in WebEx on the bottom bar. There's a button by the new button that says share and then click the presentation.
I'm sorry, okay, that's the presentation.
You click the, the share button at the bottom of the WebEx.
Yeah.
And then you should be able to choose the presentation from, it should come up as an option. Yes, it's coming up.
Is that, you see it now?
Yes, it's not full size, but there it is.
There we go. Good. Thank you. I appreciate it. Good evening. I'm Mark Doring, President of Doring Engineering, offices at 4850 LeMay Ferry. Sitting next to me is Paul Muck. Paul is the owner of First Tee Driving Range. And sitting behind us is Scott Scovintree, who's the manager of First Tee Driving Range. We are very excited about our presentation. We are planning on providing a first-class facility with an excellent restaurant to bring our driving range maybe to a newer, higher standard than we presently had. We are very proud of our facilities and look forward to improving these and look forward to this presentation this evening. Paul Murk, the owner, has a few words first.
Hi, it's nice to meet all of you. Um. So basically, we bought this ground in the fall of 2004. And there, there was an old trailer on it and we just built the roof section over the top of that. And then in April of 2005, we opened up. Unfortunately, we had a big ice storm in December of that year and took down all of our poles and netting. And we had to go, according to the code, they all changed from being wood to steel. So right now, along LeMay Ferry, those steel poles are 100 foot tall with obviously the netting, and it goes around our whole property. In 2006, we built the new roof structure over the building and over 22 of the tee stations. I have 41 tee stations, but 22 are covered. We also, I try to improve every year and that's some of the things that I do. And we were very honored to have won the 2011 Top 100 Ranges in America. That was a, a big deal for us. We're very excited. I do have at least 15 plus high schools that come there during their season, the boys and the girls high school. So they're, they're twice a year. And then I also have 10 plus CYC organizations that come down there. I do have the pros that handle the teaching of those lessons. But I organize and schedule everybody so that they have plenty of area spaces to hit. And I gotta make sure the kids and the parents are happy. We do have a half mile walking trail, which is around the, outside of the netting. People use it all the time. Sometimes even Fox High School kids will come and run around that and then run back to school. So that's, it's very, it, it's used quite a bit. It really is. And we try to keep up with it and keep it very nice. We are open year round. We're closed only two days a year, being Thanksgiving and Christmas. We have heated tee boxes and we also put in winter protection. So you're, you've got three areas that are enclosed, plus the driving range faces south. And so if the sun is out, it could be 20 degrees. And honestly, people don't even need the heaters on and don't even need to wear a jacket. In 2019, we did the addition of Top Tracer. This is a golf version of Topgolf. Topgolf actually owns it and I lease it from them. It is a virtual video. It has the exact same games as Topgolf. And people can come and they can rent that out. You can do anywhere from a four man scramble up to closest to the pin, longest yard, whatever you might be. There's like 20 different games on it. Um, I'm huge in participating with financial support and helping out with charitable functions. I was just at a golf tournament today for backstoppers and helped work that for, it was mainly for Melville, Afton, some of these fire districts that are close. I also do it with schools and different charities. I just like to give back. It, it, I just enjoy doing that, so. I also have company parties down there. People will come and rent out sections of the range. We have team building. A lot of the churches and schools do that. Some of, like Fox has done it for their boys' football at the end of the season or, you know, just do it for their main, their main people that are in charge of their facilities and things like that. I also do chamber luncheons and every year we usually have demo days.
The site is located again, and this map here, north is straight up. And LeMay Ferry is located there and the Merrimack River is located to the southeast. And the site sits right here, which is 12.9 acres. It is currently zoned non-urban and some floodplain, non-urban, and we're requesting a C8 zoning. The main reason we're requesting the C8 zoning is for the restaurant. We're really excited about providing a first quality restaurant on this site. Again, we are very proud of our site being one of the top 100 driving ranges in the country recently. And we are looking forward to continue to improving our facilities. To the southeast and west of us is floodplain, non-urban and non-urban. And to the north of us is all industrial zoning. This is a picture from across LeMay Ferry at our site. And this is a zoom closer. The, again, the roofing structure you see there, the green is very new and very, very nice. I was out there this morning hitting golf balls myself. Facility looking fantastic. The, underneath there, again, you see the original modular building. That's what we intend to replace, and that's the main focus of this year tonight, is to remove that modular building and build a brand new building with better facilities for golfing and restaurant. So again, the existing roof structure here is going to remain. And the existing modular building is what we intend to remove and replace. There's a picture from us from our parking lot. We're looking to the south here. And again, the existing roof structure in very good shape, very nicely done. And we like to replace the original building. This is, it's the same location, looking to the east. We have storage behind those fences there. We're going to redo that fencing and the storage in that area and bring it up to date. Here's just a picture of our driving range, people enjoying themselves on a beautiful day in South County here. This is looking at the tee boxes and we're looking back at the modular building. Again, it's going to get replaced. The under, as you can see, the roof above is absolutely gorgeous and we're very proud of it. Again, everything in this picture remains the same except for we're removing the modular building. There's a picture from outside the driving range, people hitting golf balls in our facility. Now, this here site plan north is actually to the right, so I flipped you around a little bit, okay? And then again, LeMay Ferry would be located there and the Merrimack River is located there. The existing entrance is located there. We have a parking lot that's existing. We're gonna expand it slightly. I'll talk about that shortly. The driving range sits out to the south. We have the golf netting around the whole thing, which is very new and in very good shape. There's the existing building that sits under that roof that we saw. And existing tee boxes located all along this area here. And we have floodplain on this parcel, but it's all outside of the driving range area and it's nowhere, doesn't affect any of the parking or the proposed construction at this point. I'm gonna flip you again, because I can get more on the picture this way, but this time north is, we're back to straight up. Okay, LeMay Ferry again, that would be to our left. Again, the entrance is there. We are proposing a new sign monument. We'd like to bring our branding up to current standards. We have a nice new sign monument in that area. Again, that's the existing parking lot. And we are going to provide a screened trash enclosure at this location. That will be new construction. And behind there, we're also going to have a new fenced-in storage area. And the fencing will match the screened-in trash area and they will both be screened accordingly. We have a putting green over this location, which gets a lot of use. And again, the driving range is to the south. The existing tee boxes along there. And again, that white is the outline of the existing roof structure, which we intend to keep. In this area here, that is the new golf shop and restaurant. And along with that, we are going to have six new elevated instructional tee boxes above the restaurant itself. So we're really looking forward to that to help us with our training instructional area. Our goals of the project are to provide a premier golf destination in South County, to provide state-of-the-art instructional facilities. We want to have a family-oriented atmosphere. We want to have youth training facilities for our local athletes. Quality facilities for charitable events, open to the public and walking trail. And again, we want to have this first-class restaurant. So when you go to our place, you have a place to sit down afterwards and drink a Coke, maybe have a burger and enjoy our facilities. We take great pride in the quality that we exhibit every day and we maintain our facility immaculately. This here is elevation of the building, rendering. And this is if you're looking from our parking lot to the south, okay? The brown above and the green, the light green, that is the rendering of the existing roof structure that we are going to maintain. Tucked in under this roof structure is our new building. It'll have stone on the bottom and it'll have some hardy board, hardy board drywall, not drywall, hardy board siding, thank you, on the edges. And then we're gonna accent that off with some drive-in on the middle portion. And then we're gonna have some screenings, some shutters over the existing windows. Those windows you see there is an area, is actually the dining area. And people can sit here and enjoy a drink after the golf and look out the window. So we're very excited about that facility. Want to say that? Okay.
Just to kind of give you guys an idea of where I'm going with this. So ever since I bought the place, every year I try to do some type of putting money back into it. And so this has kind of always been a dream of mine to expand it to this extent. We are very family-oriented and I want to keep that family environment along with this. I'm trying to keep the inside of the facility with the new restaurant and the renovations and everything. Kind of that old world golf course type feel, maybe a little rustic to it, just to make it a cozy, comforting, comfy, inviting environment. You know, I've talked to very many people and they all say they enjoy coming there. I found this idea off of a lot of people and they're all very excited. And on the other hand too, I'm trying to keep up with, you know, to make it an entertainment facility to keep up with both family golf and with Tower Tee, which is going to be opening fairly soon. So hopefully you will take all these considerations in and we'll see where it goes.
So again, we're gonna remove the modular building, replace with a new building. We're gonna have a new customer service area and a new full-service restaurant, which I am looking forward to because I live just down the street and I'm trying to negotiate a steak sandwich onto the menu. New elevated instructional area. And this is gonna be a first-class facility for South County. We appreciate your consideration and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer that at this time. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are you expanding your hours at all with, with the addition of the restaurant?
It's possible.
We're currently open until 10:00 PM every evening. And we are considering 11 o'clock. It's all up in the air at this time. Considering maybe another hour past that.
Sure. I don't see that as an issue. Anyone else have any questions?
Before we move to, before we move to the public section, I just wanted to know, what is the square footage for the new structure proposed to be?
It's a little over 3,000 square feet. I think it's like 3,400.
Thank you.
It's staying with under that roof line that is there right now. So the roof will not be changing.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no one else, Mel, you want to take it over from here?
Sure. So if anyone would like to make a comment or ask a question about this petition, you need to click the raise hand button next to your name on the participant list. Or it might also possibly be at the very bottom right-hand corner of your screen. But if you click that hand button next to your name, we will be able to unmute you for public comment. Diane Bickett, your hand is still up. I didn't know if you had another comment.
No, sorry. I'll put it back down.
Oh, no, that's okay, okay. Other than that, I don't see anyone else.
Okay. We don't need rebuttal then, and I appreciate the presentation. And that concludes this hearing. And we will go on to PC 15-21 Chantel Nixon Clark, request for amended C8, playing commercial district.
We have PC 15-21 Chantel Nixon Clark requesting an amended C8 on a 2.8 acre tract located in the northeast quadrant on North Highway 67 and Robbins Mill Road. So here we have the county context map. You can see the site is located in North St. Louis County, north of Highway 270. And on the right, we have a aerial photograph. Looking at the land use map, the site is currently developed as a gardening nursery. We have the St. Louis County Library to the west, just north of the site. There is single-family residences. To the north, we also have single-family residences as well as to the east. To the west, we do have single-family as well as some commercial uses. So again, here looking at the aerial of the site, you can see it was developed as a gardening nursery with the associated facilities. There is a single-family residence on the site. And you can see that it is adjacent to some other minor commercial uses along Highway 67. So looking at the site, this is at the entrance. Looking north, you can see that there are still some existing greenhouses as well as the existing office structure. Next, this is looking west down Highway 67. This is looking east down Highway 67. And you can see the farmer sign for the nursery as well as the adjacent commercial use. This is going towards the east of the site, headed towards the east property line, showing some of the downhill topography. This is down at the bottom of the hill, facing the property line at highway, the south property line at Highway 67. Moving back up the site, this is the existing greenhouse at the north property line towards the back of the site. This is next to the This is next to the existing building, looking up at the single family residence on site. This is a small shed structure that is right on the north property line. You can see the structure from the neighboring residence right behind it. This is the back of the single family residence on site. This is the front of the single family residence. It's on the west property line at Robbins Mill Road. Looking, if you're standing in the driveway, looking across the street, there is the St. Louis County Library. Looking north down up Robbins Mill Road, you can see there's residential uses. And this is the streetscape looking south downs Robbins Mills Road, back towards Highway 67. This is from the entrance to the property, looking at the subdivision that is across Highway 67 to the south. Next, the petitioner will present.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Elmer or Chantel, I don't know who has the PowerPoint.
Yeah, this is Elmer. I will be making the, a short presentation.
Okay, I just made you the presenter. So if you click the share button at the bottom of the screen and then your presentation, it should come up.
Okay. Okay, the proposal for this is to
I don't see it yet. I don't see the PowerPoint.
Okay. It's up on my screen.
Go back to the WebEx meeting itself. And then at the bottom by your mute button. There should be a button that says share. And then click on the PowerPoint.
Okay. Okay, can you see it now?
I do not.
Okay, let me try. Okay, I'm share. I'm sorry, I'm having some trouble getting to the PowerPoint. When I hit share, it to share content. Okay. Yeah, what we have is, as was talked about in the, in your presentation. Uh, this is the old Bowman Nursery on North Lidburg. And the developer, Chantel Dixon Clark is planning on converting it into a winery. So I'll go through a little bit of what we're planning on doing. This is the existing residence on the site. It will be it'll remain and the upper portion of the of the home will be used as a management office with parking will be in the driveway, but it's been used. Uh, this large tree in the front yard will remain to help to screen the property from the adjacent homeowners. And this is a view of the rear of the existing residence on the left side. With the shed in the, to the rear of it. And this home over here is the adjacent home in the adjacent property. We're proposing a site proof fence along the property line and saving all of these large trees and adding additional landscaping to, to screen the property from the residential area. This is behind the residence. It's an old greenhouse that was is been abandoned since Bowman loved approximately 10 years ago. This framework will remain and it will be covered with a new roof, a new structure. A new front door and replace the rear with a, to make a permanent waterproof building. This is a view of the same warehouse. You can see the roof structure itself is in good shape, but it needs to be covered. The plan for this greenhouse is to convert it into a wedding chapel. That will be air conditioned. Will eliminate the and replace excuse me, will replace the back wall with a much more attractive roll stool book for a chapel. And replace the front with nice doors. Seating for the wedding will be in using folding chairs. Uh, this is the old sales office for the nursery. You can still see the grass seed sign on it. This will be converted into a wine sales center. And there will be no modifications to the exterior of the structure other than painting and cleaning it up. But the interior will require some renovation to accommodate the different use of the building. Uh, these are two greenhouses adjacent to the sales office. Those will be refurbished and converted into a, an enclosed seating area. Where people can ingest the wine that they purchased that morning and companionship with their friends and so on. This area in the front will be probably have picnic tables or some other tables of that sort. So that the, uh, on nice days, people couldn't enjoy their wine outdoors. This is from the corner of the parking lot, looking down into the lower area. Uh, there are no plans at this time for any use of the lower area other than to meet MSD's Stormwater Management. We will put a fire retention basin of some kind that will be designed later in this area. The runoff from the fire retention basin will flow down into the pavement. And there's a culvert under Highway 67 that will rain into. Uh, this is a picture just showing, uh, it's behind the existing home, just shows the state of disrepair of the facility. Nothing has been done with the site since Bowman closed. And so it's covered with weeds, the skeleton of the greenhouses. Some of the structure for, from other irrigation system and so on. When my client saw this, she envisioned a cleaned up property that we could turn this eyesore into an attractive asset to the community. And that is the extent of my presentation. So Chantel, did you have anything to add to it?
Good evening, everybody. As cited before, I'm Chantel Nixon Clark. The proposed property is currently zoned for agricultural use. We are submitting a proposition to get it to where we are able to use the property for wine sales. As you can see, it's about closely to three acres, 2.83 acres. And we plan to use socially her chateau as a community development for North County. Uh, this property has been vacant for over 10 years. And as you can see, the landscaping and some of the structural properties have been overgrown or labitated. And so we want to take this property and make it into a staple. And historical piece of property in North County. Our main goal, I know that we, we mentioned winery, but we don't want to lose sight of how important the community is to us. We want to be able to provide jobs for St. Louis County residents. We want to be able to provide camping sites for boy scouts, girl scouts. We want to be able to partner with some of the local churches for events and things of that nature on the property. We have done a little bit of the research and we plan to spend at least a third of the budget on landscaping. And why is that important? And I know you guys may ask. But it's important before, because of the soundproofing and the safety of everyone around us. So I just wanted to note that and let you guys know how important it is just to keep everyone in our community safe. We know that we're in, right in the heart of a community where homes are to the front of us and to the back of us. And so how important that landscaping is. We have familiarized ourselves with the decimals for total noise use during the hours of operations. Our hours of operation, we will operate from Tuesday to Sunday, 11 to 8:00 PM. And also be able to just keep, keep, you know, keep the community as if it is already.
Okay. Anything to add there?
No.
Okay. Commissioners, questions?
What you got planned on having signage?
Yes, sir. So on the front, there is already a sign that will be updated. There will be no structural changes or anything to the existing signage that is there.
Okay, so you have your name on that signage that's already there. How about lighting?
Yes. Yes, it will be lighting added to the property for outdoor use as well as the sign.
You don't know where you're going to put those lighting at present time, though.
So yeah, so there's currently lighting structure on the property. We're just going to add to the storefront and then the part where the outdoor seating.
Do you plan on doing any more parking, allowing any more parking spots or anything like that?
Uh, later on down the road. So currently we're okay with the parking, but that is our five year goal.
Okay. Now down there where they used to keep the gravel at the lower level? Or are you going to do anything with that at all? Close it up a little bit. What you're doing, you know, it's eyesore, I agree with you. But I'm just wondering. Do anything with that?
Yes, sir. So we've, we've created a very large budget for the, for landscaping and we know how important that, that can be. So we have, we will there are existing trees that are dead. Some overgrown weeds and things like that. And so we do plan to take care of that. And also manicure that for the duration, you know, as, as long as we have the property. We know how important that is for winery. And so, you know, just for the aesthetics and how it looks. That is a primary, primarily important thing for us as far as the landscaping is concerned.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners? On, on the sale of wine, where I take it you're not growing grapes?
No, sir.
So the extent of your sales is going to be wine only? Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And where, where, where do you propose the wine is coming from? Because of your brands or?
Yes. And so it would be a variety of brands from all over the world, Australia, Italy, France, you know, places. And also local wineries as well. We want to promote our local, you know, wineries.
Okay. About how many employees do you anticipate?
So our plan is to have waitresses and waiters for out, for the sales and for tastings. And then we would add employees also for the chap, wedding chapel. Uh, we will need employees also for the outdoor seating as well.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other commissioners? Seen none. Mel, you want to take it from here?
Sure. So if you would like to make a comment or ask a question about petition, please click the raise hand button next to your name or possibly in the bottom right, right hand corner of the screen. First, we will have Gregory Porter. Gregory, you are unmuted to give your, to give your comment.
Thank you, my name, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. My name is Greg Porter. I'm chairman of the North St. Louis County Problem Solving Committee. I just have a couple of questions. One is I'm concerned, first of all, I'm, I'm happy that somebody's looking to do something constructive with the property for the benefit of the community. But one of the concerns I do have is the parking. As someone else mentioned earlier, the, the parking lot does not appear to be that large. I know that's something that you're looking to do to expand in sometime in the, in the near future, in the next five years, as I think you said. However, if you had a very large wedding, that could be a problem, I could see where there would be not enough places to park vehicles. So then vehicles would have to park on the shoulder on Highway 67, which is not a good thing. So that's one of the concerns. Another one, uh, one of the things that we're all concerned about in North St. Louis County today, as well as anywhere, but especially up here. Is any kind of potential for violence and shootings and things like that, when you have a large gathering of people around. So those are my two major concerns with regard to this. Uh, you also mentioned something about boy scouts and girl scouts camping. I guess I don't really see where that fits in with a winery. So I think that in some cases here, there may be some need for additional clarification on some things, but those are the, the two major concerns that, that I have. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mel, go ahead.
Okay, next we have Tasha Pettis-Bonds. Okay, Tasha, you are unmuted now.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to speak on behalf of Chantel Nixon Clark. And to kind of answer some of the questions that the gentleman just mentioned. I'm one of the individuals who's assisting her with creating this plan. And while parking and violence and shooting is a constant thing that we want to make sure we tackled in our planning. I wanted to kind of give you some additional feedback. Number one, as far as the parking is concerned, that was one of the things that we mentioned to the bank when we were looking, when we were seeking funding. And it has been approved conditionally with a story in a phase two, which will include additional parking. And I think the gentleman mentioned the area that will be developed into the parking lot, which is that gravel area below. Um, and then this, the, so in the comment around the parking right now being an issue. Um, with that in mind, we do plan to keep this as a private venue with smaller numbers and making sure that we pay close attention to the meeting that, that lower number in attendance. So really trying to make it that small personal feel for weddings and ceremonies that will be taking place. The second thing that we are looking at, of course, in the violence and shooting space. When we think about the clients that we're looking to serve, that's one of the reasons why the price points are slightly higher than what typically you may see if you were to buy a bottle of wine. We want to ensure that there's going to be, that this is going to be attractive to the mid to upper middle class and affluent communities that's within the North County area. We wanna ensure that there's gonna be, that this is going to be attractive to the mid to upper middle class and affluent communities that's within the North County area. Um, and the goal is for us to create like this wine event space that's very similar to some of those smaller venues. That you find in Grafton, that you find in Augusta, Missouri. And it's gonna help drive some of that revenue back into the North County marketplace. And then in the, the space around the, the girl scout camping and the different ideas. This is not just a wine um, space and it's, it's more of an event space that has a wine uh, label to it, right? One of the things that I can come in Chantel about, annoying her personally for several years now. Is in her ability to um, connect with the community in a different space than what some of us are quite naturally able to. And one of the things that she did not mention is that she has been running a non-for-profit organization. That centered around breast cancer awareness for the past twelve years. And it has a two hundred fifty thousand dollar annual budget. And one of the things that she does through their programming is rent out space and give back to the community. This right here will give her the opportunity to do such thing in her own space now. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, I don't see any other speakers.
Okay, I don't think we need rebuttal. Listen, commissioners, have any questions? Any follow up? Seeing none, that will conclude this. This hearing. And we will go on to P C sixteen and seventeen dash twenty-one McBride Beara Land Company LLC.
So we have P C sixteen and seventeen twenty-one McBride Beara Land Company LLC. Request um, an R one and C eight to R two and P E U in R two. On a six point eight acre tract of land located on the north side of Lucy Avenue, west of State Highway one forty-one. Here we have the um, overview map. You can see that the subject site is located in southwest St. Louis County, just south of Interstate forty-four. And on the right, you can see we have a aerial photograph with the site outlined in red. Next, we have the land use map. You can see that the um. The subject site is bordered by the municipality of Valley Park. We have large lot, single family residential around the site. There's also um, commercial. Just directly north of the site. There's also commercial along Majestic Drive. And then it's mostly surrounded by other single family and you can see it's bordered by um, Highway one forty-one. To the east and um, Interstate one forty-one to the north. Again, here we have an aerial of the site. As you can see, um. It is bordered by Valley Drive and Lucy Avenue. Um. And it's again located um. On the border of St. Louis County and Valley Park. And you can see currently there's some single family residential in the area. This is our first photograph. It is looking southeast at the intersection of Lucy Avenue and Majestic Drive. Next, we are um, at Majestic Drive, looking to the north um, over towards um, Interstate forty-four. This is looking to the east, that is Highway one forty-one. This is um. On the interior of the site, this is Valley Drive um, looking west on Valley Drive. This is looking north. We are at the um, the site's property line, where um, at the fence. That is where you get into the Valley Park jurisdiction. Again, here we're looking north um, at a highly vegetated area of the site. Um, at the Valley Park jurisdiction line as well. This is looking northwest of the site. Again, you can see that it's heavily vegetated and um, undeveloped. This is looking south, um, this is a single family residence on an adjacent parcel. Um, continuing south on Valley Drive, um, this is another single family residence on a large lot. And this is looking, if we're looking west on Valley Drive near the site, we have um, more. Rural, single family residential. Um, this is if you are looking southwest from Merrimack Station Road. It's showing the topography um, where the, the subject site is up um, on. The top of the, the plateau of the cliff. And this is um. Looking south again, up at the subject site, which would be situated um, up on the top of the plateau with all of the trees on it. And next the, is the petitioner's presentation.
Good petitioner.
Um, Catherine, do you have the PowerPoint or?
Yes, I do, Mel.
Okay, I will make you the presenter right now.
Thank you.
Okay, you should be able to share your screen.
Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, uh, good evening commissioners. My name is Catherine Moore and I am here tonight on behalf of the applicant McBride Beara Land Company LLC. And we're happy to be back in unincorporated St. Louis County before this commission. Uh, the new project we wanna discuss with you tonight is a joint venture between McBride Homes and Beara Construction. Uh, as industry leaders in the region, we work together quite a bit and we formed our own joint development company, Elite Development Services. Who would be the project developer for this project? For those of you who are not that familiar with our company, uh, McBride Homes is the largest home builder in the state of Missouri. And we're the largest union builder in the nation. Uh, we've been creating neighborhoods in the area for over seventy-five years. And we're currently developing thirty-one new communities in the metropolitan area. So stability is certainly our strength and we have a lot of experience in the St. Louis County region. The site that we are discussing tonight, uh, your county staff, uh, just introduced quite well. But here is an aerial of it for you. And as was mentioned, it's just south of Merrimack Station Road and just west of Route one forty-one. At the border of St. Louis County, unincorporated St. Louis County and the city of Valley Park. Uh, the team with me here tonight to answer any questions the commission or the public may have. Is project manager from Elite Development Services, Chris Cutler. And our project engineer from Sterling Company, Mike Faulkner. So hopefully our group will be able to answer any questions the commission may have. So the site outlined in front of you is six point five acres in size. And this project is actually a two jurisdiction project. It's a larger assemblage that's partially located in the city of Valley Park. And partially located in St. Louis County. So combined, the total acreage of this new exciting project that we're calling Majestic Point. Is sixteen point three four acres in size. And it is located off of Majestic Drive, uh, which connects to one forty-one. The site located in St. Louis County is currently zoned a combination of R one and C eight. It's largely vacant, significantly underutilized and it's surrounded by residential uses. There's a adjacent billboard use and then there's that gas station convenience store use you saw a photograph of. So before this commission is our application to rezone the site. From R one and C eight to an R two with a planned environmental unit designation. And we have a corresponding rezoning and plan submitted to the city of Valley Park that's going through their process right now as well. So here is the county's current zoning, current zoning map. Uh, that faded out striped area, that's all in the city of Valley Park. But the county's zone areas are that bright pink C eight area. This, uh, the sites there gray outlining yellow. And then you can see it's adjacent to quite a bit of R one. But that the platted, modern subdivisions, the newer developments in the area are zoned R two. So our application for the Majestic Point project for free tonight is in line with the greater area. And R two makes sense uh, as a slightly more dense residential zoning between an R one and between that C eight and the commercial areas that are nearby. Here is a colored site plan of the county portion of the project. And this exhibit is, is great because you can really see the amount of common ground. And green space and how we have clustered the lots to the interior of the site. So that way it's completely buffered by common ground. And that dark green represents tree preservation areas. So a significant amount of tree preservation is occurring at this project too. So now, just for your reference and your own understanding, here is a color cyclone of the whole project, including the Valley Park piece. And you'll see that's the theme. Are these buffer areas along the perimeter of the site, lots and lots of tree preservation, quite a bit of common ground. Uh, and the project file i- is partially located in unincorporated St. Louis County. And partially located in the city of Valley Park. The two jurisdictions won't affect how it functions. It will be one residential community with one homeowners association and it will function as a cohesive whole. So the features of Majestic Point are nineteen single family detached lots. Located on the county portion of the project. But the lot count for the project as a whole is forty-four single family detached lots. The product we, we are hoping to construct here is McBride's extremely popular Bayside Series Home product. Of course, new streets and sidewalks will be provided along with, you know, other new infrastructure. And um, I walked you through the significant uh. Natural buffer areas and the large amount of common ground. For the just the county portion of this project, we have thirty-three percent tree preservation. And two point five acres of common ground. But if you look at the common ground throughout the project as a whole, it's over seven acres of common ground. Uh, so it's quite, it's quite substantial and this community includes a lot of quality uh, green space will add to the aesthetics. So the single family homes I mentioned are our Bayside Home Series products. All detached, single family. We offer ranch and two story models. And two car garages, fully platted lots and landscape packages always come standard to our home buyers. There are numerous elevations for home buyers to choose from. Uh, but many of those offer some stone and brick elements and accents. This development, Majestic Point, will absolutely complement the existing residential developments in the area. Uh, those are one being uh, quite, quite a bit older, uh, with larger lots. But with all of the current more modern subdivisions in the area being R two. So they will work together, um, and it'll fit right in in this location. Um, it'll also bring additional new and modern housing options with modern features and floor plans to this part of the county. And another feature that we are excited to be able to offer to our home buyers. Is that they have the opportunity to go to our state of the art, award-winning design studio located in Chesterfield Valley. We're the only local home builder who has such an expansive facility. Where our home buyers can see all kinds of options, selections, features to really add value to the interior of their home and personalize it. Um, so offering them that experience goes a long way and allows people to really make their home their own. And here are some photographs of some of our Bayside Series homes. You'll see some two stories and ranch uh, models on this slide. And here are um, some more again additionally two-story and ranch models. We are seeking to rezone this site from R one and C eight to the R two P E U. Because it just makes sense for good, efficient site planning. This is a challenging site with some topography issues, the dual jurisdictional issue. And the, uh, the location being adjacent to those roadways, however, not really being impacted by them based on that topography. So working with the site constraints, we were just able to really form a beautiful community where you can utilize that P E U. To have those tree preservation areas and really provide for that common ground and green space as buffers to the existing neighboring uses. So we believe that this zoning absolutely makes sense for this project. And we uh, appreciate the commission's consideration. And our group is here and available to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, commissioners, any questions? Seeing none, I think you answered most of them for us, so.
Well, that's good.
Before we, just for the commission, before we move to the, to public, to public comment, I was hoping, uh, Ms. Moore, that you could answer for us. What's the average lot size and sort of what's the range of lot sizes in the counties, in the county area?
There is a bit of a range with the average being uh, sixty-seven forty-nine. Um, uh, there's some that are smaller, definitely some that are larger, but that is the average lot size. And the average square, uh, and the homes range from just under twelve hundred square feet all the way to over twenty-seven hundred square feet. And neither of those figures include the full basements that are providing all of our homes.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
Okay, Mel, you wanna take it?
Sure, so if you would like to make a comment or ask a question about this petition, please click the raise hand button next to your name. Or it's possibly in the very bottom right hand corner of your screen. Um, we will start with Matt Davids. Matt, you are unmuted to give your comment.
Well, thank you very much. I, I just have a few questions. Uh, I'm a resident in the area, I'm pretty close to the development. I was just wondering, uh, number one, if there's gonna be blasting in the area for the basements, uh, since the area was scraped, uh, years ago when the highway was built. Then I was also um, wanting to know how traffic would be affected if Lucy Lane and Valley uh, Lane are being widened. Down further into the older neighborhood or how is the new construction gonna be uh, attached there? And then, um. I think that is it. Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll have them answer that on rebuttal. Now go ahead.
Next will be Erin Davids. Erin, you are unmuted.
Uh, yes, um, I am obviously related to Matt Davids. And my question is about the turnaround on that shorter road. It's not a cul-de-sac. Are they wanting to continue the neighborhood later on possibly?
Okay, we'll have them answer that.
Okay, I don't see any others. If you would like to make a comment or ask a question. Please click the raise hand button by your name. I, okay, here's one. Next we have Joe Assenelli, excuse me if I pronounce that wrong, Joe. Joe, you're unmuted, but we're not hearing you. Joe, if you wanna type your comment into the chat, um, I could read it. I don't see. Anybody else at this time.
Okay, um. On um, some of the points brought up, blasting, any uh. Anything rectified there or discussed?
Oh, I can tell you, uh, members of the commission that of course, if any blasting is required, we have to do pre-blast surveys. And file the St. Louis County code requirements for blasting, which are substantial and which are there to protect and monitor the situation. Uh, with that being said, uh, Chris Cutler, our project manager from Elite Development. Uh, Chris, do you wanna unmute and just answer whether or not there will be any blasting? I think I can address the remaining of the rebuttal.
Sure, I mean, it, it's, it's always possible based on the uh, the rock in the area. We're not far enough along designs to know that for sure, but it is possible.
Sure, okay. Sure, okay, thank you. Traffic, new construction?
Um, as far as the traffic questions and the access goes, uh, our our connection is gonna be off of Majestic, which connects to one forty-one. Uh, we have an internal new street system that of course, that stubs to a temporary end next to, you know, at the end of the property, which is required by St. Louis County, should there be a need in the future for that connection to be made to the adjacent property. So that's just typical in any new project we have. You see those temporary T turnarounds or sometimes temporary circular turnarounds. Um, and that's just to forecast uh a potential connection maybe being needed in the future. Um, as far as traffic goes, uh forty-four new lots uh can absolutely be, be handled right there. I mean, with one forty-one and Majestic, uh, that a, as a project of this size doesn't merit a traffic study. A traffic study is required for, you know, significantly larger developments that can really impact traffic, whereas forty-four lots is, is not deemed a significant traffic creator uh by traffic engineers. Um, as far as Lucy and Valley, uh, we are vacating or terminating the valley as it is. That sits where we're gonna control both sides of it. We're working with the property owners. There's only two of them who use the other portion of Valley that we have, but and um those communications have been great and we're working on how to preserve their access and make sure they always have their access off Valley. Um, and then as far as Lucy goes, we're not impact. Um, I believe we're making that connection there. Uh, but Chris, do you want to discuss any needed improvements that we're making along Lucy?
Sure, I realize nothing's gonna affect Lucy directly. We're installing that proposed roundabout, which is going to give uh our residents an access directly into our subdivision and then Lucy, it'll, it'll terminate at the existing Lucy Lane. And uh those residents can continue to use Lucy as they always have.
Okay, thank you.
The comment we got in the chat was about sanitary sewer. I think it's on, it's on subject now, I assume.
Yeah, that, that's correct. We're, we're, we would propose to connect to the uh existing uh sanitary system, MSD sanitary sewer system, public sewer.
So we will be bringing that additional connection to this area.
Okay, uh commissioners, any questions? Seeing none, we thank you. Appreciate the comments. And with that, um, that ends this petition. Commissioners, we need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it and we are adjourned. Thank, thank you, everyone.